Okay, if I can have your attention. This is a work session, March 7th, 2018. I'd like to call this meeting in order. Would you please, rise and say, "Pledge of Allegiance."
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Constitution of America, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are missing Commissioner Flora tonight. We don't need him. He's on vacation, so we are without him tonight. We come to announcements. I would like to say that tonight, we're talking about recycling with the Marquette County landfill and how it affects the city of Marquette. We have various officials here tonight. We have City Manager Mike Angeli. We have, he is the Director of Public Works, which is Scott Camp benzey next to him. We have the Director of the landfill, which is Brad Austin, right here in the graveyard. We have, gentleman from Escanaba is not here?
Yes.
This is Don Pyle, from Escanaba landfill. Anybody I'm missing? Everybody's important, but these guys are on the hot seat. Okay, so we have a few people here tonight, and I think we all want to talk about what's going on with recycling in the city of Marquette. This is a discussion tonight between the City Commission and these officials. If you wish to speak your concerns as residents, we have a public comment before and a public comment after. We allow you three minutes to make this, or to give your views. We'll come to that in a little bit. I would ask, we try to keep some sort of order here tonight. You know, everybody, I don't want everybody talking at once. That gets very disorganized. If you wish to speak, raise your hand, and I will call it. That way, we don't have people talking over other people. We don't have people buttoning in. We don't get much going, so please, let's try to do that. Keep everything ordered. So, lastly, we're not going to be making any decisions. We're not voting on anything tonight. We're not going to make any decisions. We're here to get information, which will lead us to makeup. We're going to have to vote on this sooner or later, but no vote tonight. We're just gathering information. We come to the first public comment. Again, if residents want to address us, just stand, give us your name and address, and we're going to give you three minutes. Anybody who wishes to speak, in the audience, anybody who wishes to speak? I open public comment, I'm going to close public comment. We still have one more afterwards. So, we're going to come to the main item of the night, and that's recycling. And I'm going to let City Manager Mike Angeli start it off.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just as a little background, you know, we, last summer, near the end of the summer, into the fall, we approved a new waste hauling contract with Waste Management of Marquette. Shortly thereafter, we also approved a new recycling contract with the Solid Waste Management Authority, Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority, that excluded glass. That decision raised some questions and some concerns for both commissioners and the public. So, in the interim, since that time, staff has been meeting, working with the Solid Waste Management Authority and others to try to, if not come to a decision, come to some form of information that we could present to you as options on how to move forward with regard to not only recycling glass, but recycling in general. So, we asked to have this work session so that we, Scott from the city, Brad from the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority, and Don, who's from the Escanaba, I don't know what you call it? Landfill. Who has other expertise as well, including a relationship with the state regarding solid waste and recycling, to try to present to you information that we think is substantial regarding recycling, why the decisions were made with the Solid Waste Management Authority, and things of that nature. So, there's a lot of information here. Our intent is to start with Scott, move on to Brad. We were hoping someone from the DEQ would be here as well, but I don't think there is anybody here. And there is a portion of Scott's PowerPoint that has DEQ information, and Scott will touch on that in their absence. And then we'll move on to Don, and then at the end, we're going to present our options to you as to what we think is available for recycling. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Scott Camp benzey, who's the Director of Public Works, but also our main liaison and in charge of our solid waste.
Well, thanks, everybody, for coming. I'm just going to start walking through the presentation. I'll try to stand so I can address both the audience and the commission here at the same time. This is just a list of some of the players involved. Waste Management is our solid waste hauler, and they have been very willing to work with us on whatever we come up with as a solution here, working with the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority. Just a quick agenda that Mike already went through. The language of recycling. We started going through this, and one of the comments that was made is, "I just, I don't understand what a lot of these different terms mean." So, just a few of the things we'll try to go through. One of the common things you used to see out there all the time was a little triangle with the reduce, reuse, recycle, okay? They've thrown one more term in there, and that is repurpose. And so, what does it all mean? Reduce, simply reduce the volume of what we consume, okay? Reuse, reuse items that are still serviceable. One of my probably favorite examples with that is, if you go to the big box type stores, and you see a lot of the furniture that's in there, a lot of the stuff that's made with like particle board and that type of stuff. It's no longer furniture that's really, you know, passed down from generation to generation. It's used for a while, and then disposed of. Recycle, it's just the processing of items to recover usable materials. They can either be used as-is or manufactured new products. Repurpose is adapting for reuse in a different purpose other than what was originally intended. So, for example, with the glass, they often talk about what is repurposing with the glass? Well, if you go back far enough, I mean, glass bottles, such as milk bottles or pop bottles, beer bottles, I mean, they actually used to reuse all that stuff. And I think, you know, that's been kind of out of the picture for probably a good 30 years now, from actually reusing that stuff. So, how do you reuse it now, or repurpose it now? Well, and there are some areas where crushing it up and mixing it in with other aggregate, putting their roads together. Typically not the standard though for your state or your municipal type roads. A lot of temporary roads maybe, if that's what they're going to use it for. You know, another example would be, I think Brad, you've talked a little bit about, you know, potentially using it as just a filtering media out at the landfill. So, the use is really limited, and you know, there are some examples, but again, not a lot. One of the things that we talk about with the recycling is contamination, okay? Well, why can't you recycle this, or why is this load no good? Well, often, that load has become contaminated with so many different things, it's no longer effective or efficient to actually sort through it to recycle those materials. The one thing that you need to understand when we talk about recycling, there's always a dollar sign that's involved with it too. If recycling was 100% free and 100% subsidized, we'd probably recycle everything we could. But that's just not reality. So, some of the negative effects of the contamination that we see are increased processing times when they sort through the recycling, downtime in equipment, and you know, a lot of that comes from the way we package recycling sometimes. If we put it in the plastic bags to take it to be recycled, and then the plastic bags get caught up in machinery. That can create issues. At the end of the day, you just can't do it effectively, and a lot of it ends up getting landfilled. You know, an example of that is, we tried placing unsupervised containers outside the transfer station there, here in Marquette. We had to change that. So many of those loads were getting contaminated to the point that it was no longer worth actually trying to recycle them. So, that created some issues. That's been replaced with, you can now dump your recycling on the floor of the station during their open hours. Still seems to be working. Hopefully, it's cut down on contamination, and the product is something that, you know, we can have recycled. There's a very good little flyer put out by the MDEQ. It's called Recycling 101. If you grab one of the handouts, you can follow the link and actually read through it. It's a short pamphlet, but it's a pretty good little read. Single stream versus dual stream. When we started recycling residentially here in Marquette, most people were dual stream, in the sense that they put out one container of tin cans. They put out one container of glass. They put out one container of fiber type products, okay? I never left that system. I guess I'm kind of old school. That's the way I did it to start, and that's the way I still do it. Then, for a long time, we moved to single stream, where all those materials could be commingled together in the same cart, and you put them out curbside. Some of the things that you realize from that is, you end up with a lot of contamination. Your recycling rates are typically higher, but you do end up with some contamination in there. And, you know, when we had, we had single stream for, I don't know, it was quite a while. I mean, it was probably 10 or 15 years in there where we actually had single stream. And at the time, all the recycling in that program went elsewhere, okay? And then Brad's going to talk about the landfills involvement that started around 2012, and how we started partnering with the landfill on a lot of these materials. And that's when we started with the dual stream. This is the DEQ portion, so this is basically what happened in 1998. There's a Clean Michigan Initiative. They came out, where they were going to spend a lot of money for, you know, you look at 3,000 contaminated abandoned sites in Michigan that need to clean up. 14 sites that are contaminated with highly toxic PFAs, state parks, 100 million for maintenance and utility upgrades. A bond, and one thing to point out, when that was originally done, it was bonded. The bond is like a loan, at the rates, we pay about $1.50 for every dollar that's bonded for. Just a few facts that were put out with the information from DEQ. Michiganers dispose of 17 million tons of trash each year. It's the same weight as 850 school buses. 25.5% of Michigan's trash comes from other states and Canada. Due to our low disposal costs, we put 368 million recycling materials into the landfill each year. Michigan's 15% recycling rate is one of the lowest in the nation. Average recycling rate in the region is near 30%. And the average Michigan household disposes of a ton of trash each year, okay? So, that initial program that I was talking, that Clean Michigan Initiative, was a 30-year program, ran out. So, how are we going to pay for keeping that program going, okay? So, what's being proposed right now is taking the current fee that the state collects of 36 cents a ton, and raising it up to $4.75 a ton. And it's projected that that's going to bring in 79 million a year, okay? With that 79 million, there's kind of a breakdown of what they're hoping to achieve. 45 million for remediation of existing contaminated sites. 9 million for solid waste management. 15 million for recycling grants. 5 million for water quality monitoring. And 5 million for state park infrastructure. So, the two components that really affect us with solid waste are the middle two there, the 9 million and the 15 million. There's another grant program that's out there. And it's a recycling infrastructure program. With this program, and the governor's initiative of doubling the state's recycling rates, they put a million dollars out there for different programs. Half a million goes towards programs like the tire grant, which we received again. So, if any of you participated in the tire collection that's happened the last couple of years up here, that's where that type of funding has come from, is the state programs. The half a million that's out there, you can apply for a grant. With our contract and where we're at now, I don't think we're really in a position for this funding cycle, but it should be coming up again the following year if we wanted to do something different with recycling carts. Getting the cart system that we've, you know, kind of started to bring in. We can bring that further into the system, and it's a one-to-one match, but that would help us get recycling carts into more people's hands around the community. And I'm going to have Brad off and come up here now. I'll switch presentations for him. But he's going to kind of give you an overview on what's happening out at the Marquette County Solid Waste Management Authority landfill. And he'll kind of walk you through some of the decisions that were made as far as the recycling, where we've been, where we're going. He'll touch upon glass and why a lot of those decisions were made, so. There you go, Brad.
Great, thank you for the introduction. Thanks, Scott. Thank you for having me tonight on behalf of the Solid Waste Authority. Again, my name is Brad Austin. I'm the Director at Marquette County Solid Waste. And tonight, we're going to talk about recycling. We're going to talk a little bit about landfill too, and just kind of how our facility works, and kind of give everyone just kind of an overview of our operation. I've been with the Solid Waste Authority for about 15 years. Started off in operations as a compactor operator, and then moved on to operations, and have been, have been the Director since late 2014. So, I've seen every corner of the operation, which has certainly helped me as I've moved forward in my tenure there. So, Scott, you can hit the slide on that. Just the introduction with the work session slash citizens forum, just about the facility a little bit. Opened in 1989, we are owned by the constituent municipalities of Marquette County. I think it's one of the questions we get a lot of times is, "Are you waste management?" No, we are not waste management. Waste management is the hauling company. We are the solid waste authority, solid waste management authority. We take in the material. We average about 58,000 tons per year in disposal. We have an estimated landfill life remaining of about 50 years. We just renewed construction permit last year, so we have 50 years of life remaining. We process and market dual stream recycling, and we administer several recovery and recycling programs, to include the tire program Scott alluded to, electronic waste, HHW, CFL bulbs, cell phone batteries. So, we've got a lot of things going beyond disposal. We provide outreach and education to our constituent municipalities, and of course, we are the county option for solid waste disposal. Go ahead, Scott. Authority mission statement, the goal from the start, when I took over in 2014, was an integrated solid waste management system. Bringing all the things that I just described, from solid waste disposal to recycling to the non-traditional recycling recovery programs, bringing them all together into one. That system needs to be environmentally economically sound. Our focus is source reduction, reuse, recycling, composting, energy recovery, and disposal. And most importantly, protection of human health and our environment. The agenda for tonight, let's talk Waste and Recycling 101. Just to kind of give you a little background on, you know, the landfill side versus recycling side. Our waste and what's in it, which is a very important component to this discussion. We'll look at the city data over the last four years, since the city's become a part of the Solid Waste Authority recycling program. And then recycling, let's talk about why glass was removed. Moving forward, the dual stream versus single stream. And what about organics recycling? That's also very important. On the Waste 101 recycling side, collection and processing. Where does this stuff go when it's collected at the curb? Go ahead, Scott. Collected residential, commercial, and institutional waste is MSW or municipal solid waste. It's collected at the curb, you place it out weekly. It's picked up by your service provider, and it is disposed at Marquette County Solid Waste. The dual stream material that you place curbside is collected. This material is processed, it's sorted, it's baled, and it's shipped directly to market from our facility. There's two streams. There's a fiber stream, as you see on the left. It's a mixed residential, which includes cardboard, mixed paper, newsprint, magazines. And on the right, we've got the rigid side, which is plastic and metal. Fiber is baled direct, meaning we do not have a processing component to this. It's basically collected as-is. It's brought to our facility, it's dumped on our belt, goes up the belt, it's baled, it gets stored. When we get 32 bales, we call a truck, and it gets sent to Manasha or DePere in Wisconsin, to Sunoco US Papers. The rigid side is a little bit different. You can see the rigid sort on the left. That's kind of what we see weekly when it comes in. On the right-hand side is the processing unit that our staff constructed about a year and a half ago. This is the air separation unit that we utilize to remove the metal from the material. And what's left after that is basically a collection of plastics, a number one through a number seven plastic product. That material's baled and marketed, and we run about 20 ton of that per month right now. Picture on the left, just baled material, and then on the right, just loaded into a van trailer. Heading out to a variety of markets. We're working with Provital out of Ontario right now. We have shipped to American Waste in Traverse City. We've also done some business down in Detroit with recycling revolution. Our waste, what's in it? Let's go back to municipal solid waste just for a second. MSW, as I said earlier, the residential, the commercial, the institutional, non-hazardous waste. And then the city of Marquette, the waste generation, recovery, and recycling waste. Let's look at those also. Go ahead, Scott. Composition of MSW. Take a look at this. What EPA says that you're producing, okay? Of everything that you're putting into your waste, you can see the percentages here of what you're producing. So, paper, yard waste, food waste, plastics, metals, wood, glass, and other. The Marquette city data says that in the last four years, you've produced about 10,000 tons of MSW, and you've recycled about 2,300. 60% of that was fiber of that residential mix, 40% was rigid, for a 19% recycling rate, which is pretty good, pretty good. The state is at 15. Obviously, they'd like to see 30, but 19% is a good rate, but it's certainly pretty good. Breaking this down a little bit further, if you take the pie chart and you look at the different breakdowns at 10,000 tons, this is what EPA says the city produced from paper all the way down to glass, okay? And you can see that paper at 2,700 tons generated over the last four years would be covered about 1380, which is about 34% overall, which again, is pretty good. But there's more material out there to capture on the residential side. And where I see it the most is when residential trucks come into the landfill, as the picture I showed you earlier. If I exploded that up here, you'd be surprised at how much cardboard came out of the back of that residential waste stream. At the bottom, and this is segue into one of the main parts of the discussion tonight, which is why glass was removed. 576 ton recovered by the city, 36%. All of that material was landfill. And all of the glass collected in this county since 2012, when this program started, has been placed in the landfill and has not been sent to a recycling facility, okay? Slide. So, let's talk about why this is hard to understand or difficult to accept. And the reason why is because it's an iconic recyclable item, and it is recyclable. It is. But the challenges associated with glass are not fully understood, and we're going to explain that further as we move through the presentation. Couple of questions that I've had along the way here is, what about the landfill's mission to extend the life, okay? And I've been here in this position for a couple of years, and I've said on numerous occasions that one of our goals is to extend the life of the facility, okay? This decision was difficult, but as we move through this, my hope is that you'll understand better why this decision was made. And it really is a sustainable economic balance from our perspective. It is something that can be recycled. It is something that there is no market for in this area. And we are spending money on something that we have no market for. And that is the reality with glass. Scott. So, why did we do it? Why did we remove glass? Let's talk a little bit about the history, some of the operational issues, the EPA data, what it says, and what's happening nationally, regionally, and locally. History, it's been accepted as a rigid material, and that started in 2012 when the dual stream program came online. It was processed and sorted out of the rigid recyclable stream. It has been placed in the landfill since the program's inception in 2012. It has never been sent to a recycling facility. Our issues with it, as we've evaluated over the last year and a half, have been a worker safety issue. It does cause wear on our equipment. It does impact the quality and the value of the other recyclable materials. And there are no viable markets nearby. There is a very high transportation cost to moving this material out of this county. And we'll talk about that shortly. The glass, the EPA and the research data, it is 5% of the waste stream. So, of all of that material that's being produced, glass is a 5% of that mix. It has a very low environmental impact, meaning that material is inert. There are no landfill gas emissions, and there is no landfill leachate being produced. And it does have the lowest landfill airspace savings value, meaning for every ton of glass, we're going to save about two cubic yards of landfill airspace, okay? So, as compared to the other commodities, it is significantly lower. It's actually the lowest when it comes to that aspect. Scott. So, here again, there's your pie chart, EPA data. Glass is... Glass is roughly 5% of what you're producing. Slide. A little more on landfill airspace impact. You can see each of the commodities listed on the left-hand side, work your way all the way down, per ton, cubic yards, landfill airspace savings. So from plastic all the way down to the bottom, glass has the lowest impact on that landfill airspace savings. So what's happening in other communities? Nationally, several recycling programs have removed glass from the recycling bin across the country for the reasons I've already listed. Okay, the markets are difficult. It's a low value material, there is no place to move it. It does place excessive wear and tear on machinery that, those are things that are happening across the country. It's being taken out for these reasons. Regionally, 80% of the Oregami County MRF glass is being disposed in a landfill, 20% is going to a sandblasting project. In the glass at Eagle River MRF, is being repurposed at the Ashland landfill. I've spoken to Oregami and to Eagle River both and the WDNR along with the MDQ Research and Development, both organizations are making efforts to try to turn these numbers around and make something more accessible so that glass can be recycled. And then locally, and Don is here tonight, he may be able to speak to this more towards the end of the presentation, they have banned or removed glass from the recycling bin since So the options for recycling glass, it would have to be a source separated material in order to preserve the quality of the stream, meaning it would have to be placed curbside away from the other materials. It would be offered to all constituent municipalities. The haulage to glass, or glass is to Delavan, Wisconsin, which is just south of Milwaukee. The estimated cost right now, after working with some of the local haulers is approximately $75 per ton. And there would be additional fees on the solid waste authority side for acceptance because we would have to handle it and load it and clean up and there would be admin costs involved also. So we have to set up for this in order for this program to come online for the authority to be involved. Scott. As I said earlier, WDNR, MDQ Market Research and Development, I've talked to Matt Fletter and others in the state, these two groups are working to make it better, this is what they do. That's the recycling network, that's all there, what different facilities have, what's available. There are efforts being made, but at this time, based on our location, it does not make economic sense. So moving forward, the dual or single stream recycling in Marquette and what about organics? Let's talk about SSR a little bit or single stream. We've explored the advantages and disadvantages. We know about the higher participation rate, it's about 10 to 25% increase in participation if we move to that program. It does increase the volume and it may enable one pass collection, where you're going to have to bring a hauler in on a second route, which is costly. And it improves community aesthetics, having carts all in one place, all lined up on the streets. The disadvantages are product contamination because now all those products that were separated, fiber and ridges are now combined, so the liquids from those rigid containers can get on that fiber and contaminate it. It does impact the value or potentially could impact the value. The container costs are higher and obviously there's less quality control at the curb, the hauler can't see what's there, the ability to tag becomes limited, those type of things. So there's goods and bads to both programs. My feeling on single stream is the outreach effort has to be very solid. It has to be understood, what can, what can't go in, and it needs to be continually hammered home quarter after quarter and year after year. We need to do what we need to do to make sure people understand what we can and can't put into the bin. So we've been working on some feasibility of changing this entire county over to single stream. As we went through the data, we have determined that the county recycling rate overall is at 9%. We can improve and we can do better. That does not include commercial, single stream recycling, which currently right now we do not handle and we do not have that data. We only deal with the residential side. Okay, so there is material that's being collected in the city of Marquette and other communities within the authority that are going outside of this county to MRFs for processing within the region. But overall, based on our data on MSW versus recycling, the county is at a 9% recycling rate. Residential feedback, oh, sorry Scott. Feedback has been, let's go to single. More user friendly, more convenient. Modifications to existing equipment at our facility and a capital equipment investment is going to be needed in order to support this, okay? And we know by splitting cardboard from mixed paper and number one plastic for number two plastic will bring more value, but we cannot pay for that capital investment with those returns because it's above markets and they're up and they're down. So we know we can't do that capital investment and pay for that with those market returns. So we need an alternate financing mechanism and the board is pursuing a countywide millage for the capital project for recycling infrastructure. Proposed legislation at the state level may have a significant impact on waste and recycling moving forward and Don again is here and he will be able to speak to that more effectively than I and he's in Lansing and he has a better understanding of that. What I will tell you is that recycling on our end, building a new, an upgraded facility, composting, these type of things, there's legislation that's proposed and all that could impact all of those programs that each individual county is trying to put online. Let's talk a little bit about organics. There's a lot of benefits to this. We can increase landfill diversion, we can reduce methane production in landfills, and we can produce a compost material. There are issues, again, location, odors, vectors, weather. Try to dump a 20-yard load of food waste on January 15th, we have some challenges. There are collection costs and there are outreach challenges to this also because we have to explain to residents, how do we put it curbside? How, what bin do we use? When does it go out? There's a lot of things that have to be worked out in order for this to happen and to be effective. Per the EPA data, food and yard waste is 28% of the waste stream. So you've got a big chunk of this right now that is out there organically that could be diverted away from the landfill. And we do have a compost cell built at the facility. And I'll go to slides Scott. Just again, with EPA data just illustrating the food waste and yard waste, that 28% of what we're producing. Slide. We have the cell at the facility that we do small composting operations now. We've done some pilot projects with our own staff, we've done it in some neighborhoods, I did it in a neighborhood that I lived in. We've collected food waste, we've put bins out, we've done some things, we've processed that, slide. And we've donated that material to the hoop halls, this one's at Asbury Ridge up on the west end of the county. So we've got some things in place that with new legislation, potentially there could be some impacts, there could be some rules, there could be some things we have to follow, but we've got this available. So let's try to summarize all of this. City of Marquette provides 40% of the recycling volume for the authority recycling program, a solid 19% recycling rate that can improve with focus placed on what can be recycled cost-effectively. Glass was removed from the recycling bin based on a comprehensive study conducted by the authority. Glass options may be available, they are limited and they may be cost prohibitive. The authority is pursuing a countywide recycling program change from dual to single. Future recycling efforts and energy are better served towards organics recycling. And as I said earlier, proposed legislation may impact the county's recycling programs moving forward that includes curbside, dual or single, organics, there's things that are somewhat hanging in the balance at this time. Well, that's a lot of information in a short period of time. I would be glad to answer any questions that you may have in regards to recycling.
Have there questions now or do you want to have Don up there?
I can ask him questions while he's up. Say, go ahead and ask him questions while he's up if you want. Can we hear Don speak?
Sure. I'm not sure where to stand trying to get to the point where he has a spot, so I'll join him here. I'll just give you some information, first of all, about who I am and then what I do and we'll go from there. My name is Don Pyle, I've been the manager for the Delta Solid Waste Management Authority for 18 years. I am currently on the board of Michigan Recycling Coalition. I am a member of the Governor's Recycling Council and the SWAR group, which is also putting input into the current changes to Part 115, which is the State of Michigan Solid Waste Rules. They are in great need of redoing and we're in the, we're in the end of that, but it is moving forward. I've been in the waste industry since about 80, between 83 and 84, a long time, and seen a lot of changes. Just so you know, when I first started recycling, I ran a rope on the side of my garbage truck and we threaded plastic milk jugs on that so that we could get them hauled. And so a lot has changed, a lot is different. I've seen a lot of change. Bottom line is, when we talk about recycling, literally everything is recyclable in some form or fashion, whether it's food waste, whether it's glass, whether it's plastics, whether it's any kind of paper product, wood products, in some form or fashion, you can recycle things. The problem we have is the fact that not everything is practical and especially where we live. When I went to the Delta Solid Waste Management Authority in 1999, they had a used UPS conveyor that they would take materials that were recycled, dump them on the conveyor and then go along and people would put them off, pull them off, put them into Gaylord boxes. And that was the beginning of what we did. From there, they were stored in those boxes till they went into a compactor to be ultimately baled and shipped to market. In 2003, we bought a recycling facility out of Wisconsin that was no longer in use, tore that down, paid people to tear it down, shipped it from Oregami County to Delta County, erected it back up, and we had a MRF. In that same time period, if, especially those of you who are in the political scene, know that in the early 2000s, that's when things started happening within the state of Michigan, cost sharing funds really dried up, there was a lot of concern for revenues within municipalities. And so in 2003, the city of Gladstone and the city of Escanaba came to us and said, I think we're going to quit recycling, we can't, we can't pay for all of this anymore and something has to go. So one of the things that we did at that point, because we had just built a MRF and we had the facilities and the people available, we literally talked them into going single stream. At that time, they had trucks that were divided in the rear into three compartments, they had three guys on a truck, one guy would drive, the other one would pick up the garbage, the other one was sorting the recyclables, and it was very labor intensive. So what we did is basically gave them the option to go to one man on one truck with a single stream, they do their routes four days a week. Every Wednesday, they go through, pick up the recyclables, throw it in the same truck and bring it to us. And they've got one person, one truck, and it's not a unique truck. They bought that and began doing that and we've been doing that ever since. So for us in Delta County, we are a single stream. It is exactly as Brad has told you, our volumes went up, the waste in the recyclables went up, and we've been dealing and working through that as we go. We currently are not taking glass as he has indicated. In 2004, after we started that process, we were having contamination issues with all of our paper products with embedded glass, even our plastic products that had open throats to them, pot bottles, water bottles, milk jugs, we're getting glass deposits in them and we were getting feedback from our people that we were marketing to that our material was not, in their words, ideal, politely. So we made a decision at that point, if we're going to take all of this stuff, put it into one truck, crush it, cramp it, and then drop it off on the concrete floor in the facility, take a loader, push it onto a conveyor, we had to do something different. And so the very hard decision at that time was made to remove glass from the recycling mix, period. And, and we have gone through what you folks are going through. Trust me, glass is recyclable. People have been able to recycle it. They want to, they want to do the right thing. But with the contamination, with the abrasion on all that conveyor system, and for us in a MRF where we're actually have people pulling off of the plastic, pulling off the cardboard, pulling off the metal cans, and now they have to reach in and pick out the shards of glass, it was a problem. And so for all of those purposes and the fact that glass is a very inert product, if there's something to put into a landfill that doesn't produce gas, doesn't produce leachate, and will not give you an issue 100 years from now, it's glass. And the only viable use of it for us as well as for you folks, within reason, was putting it in the landfill for a road base. But we couldn't take it and mix it with our other material in a single stream system and just go down. So we've been through that process and we're there. And I feel for the situation here, I understand it, I've been there. But there is practicality involved, there's economics involved, and you do have to look at all of those things. And that makes it really hard. It makes it hard because the heart is there, you want to recycle. I've been around recycling a long, long time. I've been in the waste business and recycling and I am a recycler and I do recycle at home. I want people to recycle. But I can't throw good money at something that I can't make work. And that's a responsibility I have to the good people of Delta County. I can't do that to them. So that's where we are. A little different change, of course, here. I did indicate that I'm on the group of people who are looking and helping DEQ work with Part 115. And as Brad also mentioned, there are some major changes. The solid waste rule, Part 115, that was in place is a solid waste law. And it was designed to make sure there was capacity to handle the waste in the state of Michigan. And it did that very well. We have capacity. The new rule that we are putting in place, that will more than likely get put into place and that several of us have been helping to orchestrate, is taking a look at this material from MSW to anything recyclable and looking at it more as a, as material management and as a material that has value. It's an asset, it's not a waste. And so the new rules, as they're being put together, it deals with composting, it deals heavily with recycling, and waste management is the small part of what this new rule is going to be. I actually have a copy of the current version and it's 210 pages long. So if you really need to go to sleep some night, I suggest you get it. Other than that... Other than that, there is a lot of good stuff in there. But it is going to be looking at how we manage these materials, not how we dispose of them. And in that process, we will be looking at ways that we can collaborate, that we can make glass more recyclable through initiatives, through allowing industry to come into our area, maybe allow them to utilize this material in a fashion that now makes it practical. And that's going to be statewide. There's going to be grants available. There's going to be research money available. There's going to be money ultimately that's going to be available to Brad and myself for doing a better job of what we do. And that's where that $4.75 per ton is going to kick in. Not only take care of some brownfield science, but also take care of us and help us do a better job in putting it on us as the waste and recycling management people as to how we do that best and how we collaborate to do that, either individually, community-wide, weekly-wide, and how that happens. So, that's just a little information of who I am, what I do, and what I'm involved in. Is there anything specific that I could answer for anybody pertaining to those things?
In Delta County, so you don't recycle glass. Do you have anything special to do with glass? Do you have collection bins? And they can take it to the dump, or you just, the people have to put it in their weekly trash?
They put it in their weekly trash.
How long have you been doing this? How many years?
14.
14 years.
Yes. And I will tell you, we get people who move into our community. I field that glass question probably a dozen times a year from folks who, "Why don't you do this?" Everybody else, where I just came from, we do it.
But in a more urban area, closer to Chicago, Detroit, whatever, they are able to profitably process glass, correct?
No, never profitably.
But they take it and they do something. There's no profit whatsoever? Zero?
Well, if you had a Murph across the road from a glass plant, you might be able to. But when we made our decision, let me tell you just exactly where we were dealing with, okay? Glass-wise. And I don't think the prices have changed much. But I can tell you, in 2003, 2004, we were getting paid $21 to $25 a ton for clear glass. Mason jars, okay? And what we had at that point is because we have some agriculture that goes on down there, we actually have people with hopper-bottomed trucks that go to Minneapolis-St. Paul. Typically, they went empty to pick up soybean meal, corn, things like that, bring them back into our area. We had two glass crushers. We were crushing the glass, handling it bulk. So, all this guy had to do was open up the bottom, sweep it down into a conveyor system out there. It was the most economical trucking we could find. And at that time, we were paying between $20 and $22 a ton bulk to get the material to Minneapolis-St. Paul, all right? Now, we had labor involved with handling the glass we did get, running it through the crushers, then taking it, storing it in concrete bins, and so on. On clear glass, we were probably losing $4, $5 a ton. If you had that 300 miles closer, you might have been able to make money on clear glass. However, if you look at the glass market, the biggest volume of glass is brown glass. Beer bottles. More glass is made into beer bottles than anything else with glass. That's the way it is, okay? And for us, when we would ship them bulk brown glass, they were paying us $10 a ton. And it was costing us $22 a ton to get it there. And we were shipping four loads to one of brown glass. And then, if we took wine bottles, green glass, okay? They made us pay $10 a ton to take green glass, which means we had $32, $33, $34 in it to get rid of it. It just doesn't make sense. Glass is difficult. It's very recyclable. And the people who run the glass recycling plants know that. And people do want to recycle it. And so, the reality is, we either need more glass plants that recycle locally or we've got to get them to be willing to pay for the material to justify shipping it to 300 miles. So, to say you can recycle glass profitably, it's possible. But boy, you better have location, location, location. Seriously. I can tell you, I have an article actually with me about glass. In 2007, Anchorage, Alaska quit taking glass because they just couldn't afford to ship it anymore. And they went to a single-stream system and it was contaminating everything they had. It was just so far away from markets, they just couldn't justify it. And they haven't taken it since. Now, that's an extreme distance, obviously, but that tells us distance is an issue. It just is. It's where we live and it's where the markets are. It just is. The flipside to that is we probably have very good markets for a lot of paper products. We live in an area that has those markets and we probably do better than those paper ones. I hope that answered your question.
You did very clearly. Paul?
I'll just about put the last thing to bed after that. Thank you very much. Quite possibly, when it is recycled or crushed at these facilities, what are they doing with it? The people that are accepting it and are doing it for their, you know, that's their business?
Where we were sending it, it was getting made back into glass. That is what it was. It was a glass manufacturer.
Or anything like that?
No.
Okay. And then, I guess I'll wait and we'll go back to the other one there. Talk to Brad. Go ahead. Everybody else have to do it. Jenna?
In Delta County, when someone puts glass in the single-stream bin, what happens? So, what happens from a perspective, does their garbage or their recycling get picked up? Or does it get left at their curb side? And if it's missed, then what happens in Delta County?
In Delta County, both cities are currently automated systems. They go along with a truck. There's a cart sitting there, nice, pretty blue or green cart. And the truck drives up, the arm comes out, gets dumped in, they set the cart and they go. Whether it's waste or recyclable, they have no clue what's in it. We have to deal with it when it comes on site. Now, we have on a couple occasions, to try and keep that from happening, we advertise, we try to educate, and we have in the last 14 years on three different occasions, in the summer, hired youth intern, college student, and they go along and do recycling surveys within certain areas that we just pick this alley, pick this road, and they just go through a check at all. And then, we let people know that. They will knock on the door and say, "We're finding this. Just, you need to understand, here's what we do and you can't do this or you can't do that." And it has helped us.
And the reason I ask that is I lived in the city of Escanaba in 2014 for a year and I didn't know that that rule existed. I'm sure I recycled glass and didn't know. Never had a notification. Now, in Marquette, my husband and his family put glass in the bin and the bin wasn't picked up. So, it was just a different experience. So, I was wondering what that looked like in Delta County.
So, did you have one of the bins that you rolled out there in the alley or whatever? You should have had a sticker on the top of that bin that told you exactly what can go in there.
I blame my husband. Thank you.
So, yes, every recycling container that the two municipalities have out, there is a sticker. It's a triangle, like the arrow triangle. And inside there, it shows, "Here's good cardboard, this is good plastic," and that type of thing. And so, it should be right there before they pick up the lid. They should know what can go in there. But it doesn't always happen, you're right.
A lot of this last thing happened for us. We got a lot of emails saying, "Well, in the East Coast, to get so-and-so, so-and-so." So, you're saying other places like Minneapolis, we said, in the East Coast, they have better glass because they can, they have manufacturers that can recycle it. But here in the Midwest, there's just, they said, "Minneapolis, nowhere around here they can really do it," right? Is that you're saying like, there's no one that can take it and do and recycle it, basically make it new glass, basically, as you said?
You basically need to go to Milwaukee or the Twin Cities would be the two closest ones. There is a glass recycler in Indiana as well. That's the farthest of the three close ones of glass recyclers. Now, there is, there has been other things done with glass. They've actually used it to mix into asphalt and things like that. They don't like it in asphalt anymore because of the abrasiveness within the asphalt here and the sharp edges and things like that. So, that's been very difficult. And at times, once they snowplow for a couple of years, it starts glaring back in the sun and literally, you know, reflects like glass would along the road. So, they've had some issues with it. So, no, nothing permanent, go-to day in, day out to accomplish the task.
Yeah, I spoke with, I'm in the concrete business, so I spoke with our company that sells this, our gravel and stuff like that are local, you know, gravel pit. And they said, "Well," I said, "Could you take the glass and recycle it in the road gravel?" I said, "Yeah, we can." And I was talking to Scott about this. The problem is, the state says you have to meet certain specs and da-da-da, and they said the asphalt. So, you could see, they said, "Yeah, we could mix. We have to, again, be cost. You have to make this separate piles." Okay, yeah, you could put it down underneath the driveway or something, but you couldn't put it down on a state road or city road. You'd be back and forth. You know, we've talked about mixing the concrete, but, you know, again, you have to see, you know, I can see sidewalks or driveways couldn't really do it because we use plastic by versus helps destroy the concrete, but you could see that sticking up to the concrete. So, glass sticking up to the concrete probably wouldn't be that good. So, I can see that's probably, so, I can see all that being, you know, cost-wise, they have to separate piles. We've thought about mixing, but we have separate piles again. Because, yeah, you could say, no, you can't send it, you know, and so I can see that all. I could see, although I could see using the concrete, it'd be footings underneath the house or building or walls, but that's about it. They don't really say, you know, a place you really could do it. You know, because you said sofas wear off the surface down and, you know, Scott's guys wear it down and just get bad, yeah?
And to address some of those issues you're talking about and a primary one within the new Part 115 is going to be a compost rule, lots of compost rules and that as well. One of the things that we're working very hard on is getting MDOT to allow a very high percentage of compost when they do highway work, road work, that that compost material would pass and meet the rules that they have for topsoil on roadsides. And so, as Brad and myself do our composting and we generate this material from organics of any type, we have a way to move it out then and use it in a beneficial process. And that's one of the things, aspects of Part 115 that we're looking at very seriously and trying to make things better and encouraging those kind of uses where before it was very restrictive. We're trying to open those doors and give opportunity for people to start doing some of those kind of things and make it easier for them to be able to do it, make it easier for that business saying, "Yeah, I'll give this a shot." With all five DEQ people rushing in and saying, "What are you doing and how are you doing it? And where are you going with this?" And...
Inspectors just don't like anything.
Yeah, exactly.
And those people have horse farms and they would love to sell you some compost or stuff like that. I mean, but it is, it's a great product, but it's a little sticky here. People probably wouldn't like it so much. Inspectors probably wouldn't like it either, you know. But it's a great product, but, you know, just, we recycle concrete for a while. We're a machine, like you said, expensive machine. Worked out great. You use it like a road gravel. It separated the paste from the concrete from just the, you know, the sand and the rock. Sand and rock, we go road gravel for us to use, but then we had no way to get rid of the paste. Like the landfill helped us help with that. So, the landfill or they used it, they put it in fill for somewhere, you know? Again, just to even ask somebody about, you know, somebody said, "What about putting down the mines?" And a friend of mine, my wife's uncle works for one of the mines, said, "Yeah, the mines, like the Eagle Mine up in Big Bay," said, "Yeah, you can only put so much down in the hole. They have rules, again, state rules like you're saying." And it's like anything, get the people, get your people in Lansing to lift the laws a little bit.
Paul? Let me circle back for a second with Brad and Don. There is a market for glass. It's in Milwaukee, right? So, the issue is, it costs us money to go from Marquette to Milwaukee. So, therefore, we're losing money by doing that. But there is a recycle, genuine recycle market for glass in Milwaukee. So, then our problem is how do we solve the issue of paying to take it to the market?
I think you're missing one other step. It's how do you get it from the homeowner to Brad independently of everything else?
Right. And that then becomes a problem with tactics. How do we solve that issue of it? You're right, that has to be solved. But my point being, not only dealing with the factor of money, because we can get it done. We can take it, put it in the truck. We can get it to Milwaukee. We can do the recycle program and get the social good out of what we want to do. That's very dual. All we have to do is pop our tipping fees enough to be able to pay for that. And remember, we are dirt poor in terms of what we charge in the state of Michigan for tipping fees. And that's a far better way to do it than try to do a countywide millage. Because with the tipping fee, you now have it down at the user level rather than everybody in the county. I just wanted us all to understand that, that there is a market. It's there and it's simply a cost factor that we have to apply for. And if we have to apply better technology within the operation out in the landfill to get there, that too is just a money problem. And we can figure out how to solve that once we define that and better get it streamed again. That's all I had.
So, do we want to pay for it, is what you're saying?
Do we want to pay for it? We can do it.
What do you think about raising the tipping fee? Probably don't want to, but what do you think about that? If you raise it $3 and that covers it all, is that something you'd want to do? $2, $3?
That's something that I would be discussing with the Solid Waste Authority Board in regards to tipping fees.
I mean, it's just, that's an option.
Right. It's, there's, as I said in my presentation, we're talking about alternate funding methods and that's certainly something that we could look at. Absolutely.
Now, we understand in conversation with our folks down in Lansing that the 475 is going to happen, period. That there is no current will within the legislature to push that through.
Can I jump in on that just a little bit and let you know? This is Delta County's experience with tipping fees, paying for recycling. When I came there in 99, all of the recycling expense, and it is an expense. Recycling does not make money. It costs money. All of those bills were covered by tipping fees, all right? They are paid for by tipping fees. Now, we are a much smaller county too, half your size alone. So, our volumes are much less. But I can tell you why we went to a millage here a year ago was because we were spending more and more money running the landfill and recycling. And a few years back, the cost, the revenue from recycling really dropped. And so, the landfill had to make up more of that. And what we've experienced personally, and I don't know if that would happen here, but I can tell you what happened for us and why we chose to go and do what we did, is we would raise the tipping fee to generate enough revenue to cover that expense. And what would happen is our volume of waste would go down. Okay? And so, we wouldn't quite have enough again. So, we raised our tipping fees some more and more waste left the county. And so, we raised it again and more waste left the county. So, then we went and went to our flow control law, which we found is not really functional for ultimately keeping it here. And so, we were going to price ourselves out of business. That was our experience. I don't know if that would be your experience, but I can tell you that was our experience. But we're much closer to those kinds of boards than you are.
I understand. And I guess I would justify, I have a second to Mr. Mayor. And I guess I would justify, I have a second to Mr. Mayor, make the point that the landfill is really not intended to be the cheapest possible way we can get rid of junk. That's not the reason it exists. It existed to be an effective and efficient way to dispose of our waste and to do so in an environmentally friendly and sensitive fashion. And being able to move recyclables like glass out of the landfill and into an alternate actual recycle is part of that mission. So if it costs us money to do that, we have to figure out how do we pay for that? But that is a critical part of what that function is out there. It's not how cheap we can do something, it's how good we can do something. Because that's the ultimate benefit for all of us. I've said another question. Sir?
Well, first, thank you, Fred. Every conversation I've had with any residents so far has been, we don't care how you do it, figure out something, figure out some way to do this. And it's been a constant. Ten people yesterday, three people the day before, walking through the grocery store. But I was, I don't think I understood something in your presentation, Brad. Did you say that you only, you guys only handle residential? So you're not handling commercial recycling. Where is that going? Is it still going to you?
No, it is not. Commercial recycling right now, and the private haulers could probably speak better than this, my understanding is most is going to one or two pla, one or three places. One would be Eagle River, one would be Aldigamee County, between Appleton and Green Bay, and the third would be Germantown Waste Management Facility.
Somebody's figuring it out, going in there through the commercial. I just, I think of places like, I had the people from Barrel and Bean contact me, I realize that's not the city of Marquette, but just in one weekend, they're throwing out 500 bottles into the trash of beer, just into the trash. So and they're spending 47 cents a bottle and originally it was recyclable when they first started opening. So the only other thing that I wanted to ask, I guess, is, so in 2012 is when we stopped recycling, you guys stopped recycling glass, am I using correctly?
2012 was when the dual stream program came online.
Okay.
And from the day it came online, glass was never sent to recycling facility. It was always placed in the landfill. It was collected curbside in the bins, it was delivered to us, and we processed that material out, glass out of the rigid mix, and then in turn hauled that material to landfills.
Okay. I mean, this was the nicest way possible, but I don't know how for five years people didn't know that their glass wasn't being recycled. That's the question I mostly got, is that we kept putting it in the bins and then it just went back into the landfills? That's the biggest complaint that I continue to get, is that the trust mechanism isn't necessarily there for the future. So I'm just telling you what I hear from other people that have talked about it, but...
Peter?
How is glass, I mean, obviously it sends somewhere and crushed, like, that's kind of the point for, you crush it and then just like, say, if someone wants to, say, if it's going to send somewhere, should just put a dump truck and then haul there and just dump it or is it cubed? How was it? What I'm asking is, we had the same problem with our plant was, we used to get a lot of bagged, you know, you go to the menards, you see a bag of cement. We used to do that in Green Bay. Then they called us, no more doing it anymore, you have to go to Detroit. Well, that's kind of a little bit farther than Green Bay for us, you know, market to Detroit versus market to Green Bay. So luckily we found some guy, worked with a local trucker, and he said, okay, I haul loads all the way, so if I take a load down to Detroit, then I'll set, I'll pick up your stuff and bring it back. We luckily found two or three suppliers of other products we picked up on the way back because it worked out great for us. So he said, our paper market is very high up here. I don't know if it's very high down in Wisconsin, is there way? I don't know, I saw your video, like Scott's, you know, that's up cubed and sitting in a van truck. Is the glass like just put in a dump truck or could you, say you found somebody that says, okay, I'm going to haul the glass down to Milwaukee and I'll bring paper back or something? Is that possible? Is it just a different truck? I mean, or how does it work, you know, whoever wants to handle this, it doesn't matter, but is it possible or?
Typically, glass to a market like in Milwaukee, most producers of glass, recyclers of glass, would put it in a three-by-three-foot-by-three-foot-high Gaylord box on a pallet, and that would go into a semi.
So it's pretty simple, how they play it. So if, if there was a truck out there, just popped up in nowhere, that said, okay, and say you contacted the people on Wisconsin, they said, well, we don't have much profit for cardboard, you know, I don't know where you're, you're sending your, you know, paper and stuff like that, but say our paper market is higher up here and not so high down in Wisconsin, Illinois, would it be possible to find a truck that said, okay, I will haul the glass down there for you and then haul the other stuff back? Maybe give you a discount maybe or something? Is that, is that possible or?
My personal experience would be that the people I deal with with paper is a totally different industry than the glass. And when I ship paper, I'm talking to a US paper mill, I'm talking to an international paper company, and they're setting up the shipping.
Gotcha.
When I deal with a glass company in the past, it was on me to get it there. They never pay for trucking.
That's what I want to do, is want to know if you have, there's the same connection, if there's like, on the way there, there was a paper on the way back or something like that, just to know, because we had that problem, we, we go to Green Bay and to pick up, we have a truck that picks up bulk cement to bring it back, and we, a company down in Marinette said, well, okay, we need fly ash from the hard life or something. We were able to haul fly ash down to them, drop it off, and then pick up cement on the way back. So it kind of worked out for us, kind of help pay for the fuel down there. So I don't know if there's possible, if you're saying there's no, no road connection, there's no paper mills basically down there that can make connection, that's all I'm asking.
I don't know.
Somewhere along the line, you talked about legislation pending. Was it just the increase in tipping fee or is there more legislation coming? There's something about, you know, wait and see what happens, one of our options here. Is there something going on legislatively that we should be aware of, that you know about?
The re-rate of Part 115.
115, you mentioned that. What is 115 again?
That is the current solid waste management law that DHEQ lives and functions under.
Is their Bible okay?
Yes. That's what they use to come to deal with Brad or me about our landfills.
Are they coming up with something new that they're?
Totally different, new, yes.
The whole thing is being rewritten?
Totally being rewritten. We've been working on it for two years.
What's going to come out of that that you're aware of, that would benefit? What's good about it?
We're going to be talking about composting. And again, we're looking at turning that rule rather than it being a waste management rule alone, a material management rule, one that would manage composting, recycling and waste, and looking at them as viable assets rather than how we dispose of this. So it's a whole different mindset. It's still going to be used to work with Brad and I on our landfill, but it's also going to ultimately then drive how we recycle, how we compost. And to cover the cost of some of that, as the compost site, there's going to be fees and things involved in that. Part of what that whole re-rate does though, is it creates more oversight by the state ultimately, and so therefore raises, because we have composters out there that are doing it really, really poorly. And the, if you think landfill smell, go to a poorly run compost site, you ain't seen nothing. So there needs to be regulation in that industry as it blossoms and people start trying to find other ways to deal with byproducts of living. This guy says, I'll take your food waste, and he's dumping it on the back forty, that's a problem. Same thing we've had with the tires. You know, people said, pay me a buck, I'll take your tires, and then they walk away and there's forty acres of tires somewhere. It's a problem. So somebody's got to oversee that. And so to do that, there's going to have to be some fees in place for the composters and be, had Brad compost, so that we can have regular regulators making sure the bad players don't play very well. And so that's part of where the governor's saying, to fund some of this stuff, we need to not just get 36 cents a ton. There's other things we want to do and we want to do them better and we want to promote these things. So he's saying, I'm looking for $4.75 to generate revenue for the state to implement those changes.
When do you think that will happen?
Soonest before the end of the year, probably lame down, I guess.
Is that kind of a huge increase?
It's a huge increase.
Thousand percent?
Yeah, huge. And, and it will generate about $76 million annually is what that $4.75 will generate. That's the number that they're throwing out there.
So, kind of simple, I can't believe that I've been recycling for four years, fast, and just been doing the landfill. It's really kind of taken me off right now. And it's a difficult lesson to teach your daughter when you're doing recycling on Thursday nights and why we're doing what we're doing, and they'll learn to find out that we're not doing what we think we're doing. So if it comes down to it, basically, my, my thought on this whole glass thing is, at 4.8% or whatever that percentage, the lowest percentage of landfill space that's taking up, the only thing I can see that we could do to improve that is to crush it even smaller so it takes up less space perhaps, and maybe that's not, not so much what I'm, the case that I'm getting at, but, and then just move on to where we can really make a difference. I mean, if it's organics, and that's what I'm seeing is your number one area, that we can make the biggest, driest, to go from 15%, get, you know, we're above the state average, which is great, but, you know, why aren't we closer to 30%? What are, what are other states doing that we're not doing? Why aren't we having the educational component that's been driving? I don't want to compost in my backyard, I'm not going to lie to you. But I'd be happy to facilitate something else, to give it to somebody else that's going to use it for what it can be used for, okay? And I've got a lot of friends that do it and I'm excited for them because it's, it makes them feel good, they're doing right by the world, and I love that as well. But if it comes down to another can in my house that I go through and put food waste in, and I know that it's going to be disposed of properly, and our rates are going to go up as far as what we're able to capture from the landfill, you know, let's do what we got to do to, to bring that to light instead of worrying about, four years I've been putting garbage into the landfill, thinking that I'm doing the angel's work hauling it up to the curb. Man, that's, that's not cool. So, maybe I'm just trying to move ahead and get down to the brass tacks here, but let's keep, let's keep working on stuff that we can genuinely show quantifiable data that just says, hey, we're doing better. And this is the stuff. And I immediately think of the tires, the other things, and all these other weird items that I'm, that I'm not throwing into my daily garbage. But when it comes to food, that's the number one, or there's a number two and number three. And we can focus on the top three or five or whatever makes the most sense, then, you know, get away from glass, let's put it to bed for right now. I'm sorry to say that because I want it, as much as the rest of you, but let's focus on how we can make a difference.
Two quick hits if I can. How many people here think or thought they were actually recycling their glass? Does this tell you something, guys? I mean, this really tells you something about the ineffectiveness of what's been happening out there. When virtually this entire audience says, we thought, something considerably different than what you've actually been doing for seven years. Other item is, the bar, or the pie graphs are nice and nifty, but it's like, I believe what Brad said was that, that these were for BPA, these do not necessarily represent the city of Marquette. This is the generic bar graph, the pie chart. So it might be right, it might be wrong, but we're eupers, we're doing stuff a little different maybe than the people are doing otherwise. So this ain't the word of God, this is just a sampling maybe of somewhere in the United States. Other than that, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
How come we're not talking about the options?
Coming up now.
Coming up, we're going to come back to those if you complain.
Do you have any more questions?
Probably a lot of questions, but they're not forthcoming.
Okay, can we talk about options?
Sure.
Brad, let me ask you one last question. Someone just mentioned, what percentage of glass takes up, goes into our landfill? Do you have that percentage? You say it's a small percentage, 5% I thought you said at one time? Or is that the pie graph?
Yeah, the, the graph is, is from the 2012 study, it's the total amount of MSW produced in the, in the United States. So it's broken down, so 5% is the amount, the volume of material.
National average.
Glass, national average, exactly.
Because you have really no way.
So, I mean, other than, other than what the participating municipalities have been signed on as far as the numbers, we've got a percentage of glass for the rigid nets that we had at 30% is roughly those numbers. And that's been verified since the change from 2017 to 2018 here, when we look at the difference in volume that we receive on rigid net. So, and, and speaking of that, Scott just mentioned it in regards to plastic, because there was some concerns at one point back in October, when we talked last in regards to what was going to happen with these OPEC plastic, three through seven. We do continue to market the number one through number seven bail. Our resource recovery staff has been working with Revital Plastics out of Ontario, and we're looking at hopefully a one-year deal with them to continue to accept that material. But that material is another material that's on the radar. Again, we talk about things that are happening overseas. China has banned the acceptance of that material, and the United States has relied heavily on China over the years and failed to build infrastructure in the States to support these materials. So now that China's banned it, it's going to other places, it's being banned in curbside programs across the country, it's piling up in yards, there isn't a place to put it. So there are some issues with that. It's something, as I said in October, that we will continue to look at every single commodity and evaluate, and it's very dynamic. Currently, right now, for questions in regards to three through seven plastics, we do have an arrangement that we hopefully come in for at least a year to be able to continue to market them. However, significant value difference between plastics, number ones, number twos versus the three through seven plastic. And that's where we start talking about the separation of these materials and making them worth more. Currently, right now, we do not separate those. We send them, all market them co-mingled together, so. As you just mentioned, with the pricing prices. Uh, sure, I got some averages from Don a while back, and we were at roughly $400 per ton for one and two plastic. We currently receive $10 per ton for co-mingled. And that one and two fraction of that rigid bail is roughly 50% of that bail. So there is something to talk about here in regards to separating these materials and marketing them separately, which is why we're pursuing in part the materials recovery facility upgrade.
Doesn't Delta County not take plastics four through seven or whatever it is?
Delta County accepts plastics one and two.
One and two. How long you been doing that?
Since the beginning. Since 93.
Maybe you could explain what one and two is related to three and seven?
Sure. Number one, PET, which would be like water bottles, Gatorade bottles, those type of things. The number two is split into two different categories, the two naturals, like a milk jug. A two-color would be like a Tide bottle. See the arrow, the arrows on the bottom with the two, that's a high density polyethylene. So there's that one PET, two natural, two colored, and then from there it breaks off to that three through seven, which is your OPEC butter tubs, yogurt cups, the to-go trays, those type of things are that OPEC plastic.
Options?
Options.
So option one is our current system, which is a status quo. Basically, it's bi-weekly fiber, bi-weekly rigid, ionized glass. It's all processed here in Marquette. It's all processed here in Marquette. Seeing where we're at, wouldn't change the cost to residents, it still participates with the county landfill. The one con is that glass is landfilled in Marquette. That's been heavily discussed, so I'll move on to the next option. Modify the current system. It was discussed of potentially looking at a fiber week, followed by a rigid minus glass week, followed by another fiber week, so you're still doing fiber every other week. And then the fourth week would be glass only, and repeat weeks one through four. There's two versions of this, you'll see another option. One is to continue with doing what we're doing, and the other is to actually take it to waste management identified somewhere down towards Chicago. So I'm not sure if that's the same as the Delaunne, Wisconsin, which is south of Milwaukee. We're talking about the same general region as far as transporting the glass to. Processed in Marquette, no additional cost to residents, participates with the county. Again, you're still landfilling the glass at the end of the day. Some of the things that were brought up, as Brad was talking about, the landfill glasses abrasive, once it's all crushed up. So you're going to have not only additional wear and tear on their equipment, but additional wear and tear on the hauler's equipment, probably beyond what it was when it was kind of mixed together, so you had some other products in with it. Probably the buffer as opposed to just having all glass in there. Some of the things that, you know, we'll have to deal with as far as the residents, added step for residents. Anytime we made a change, it's taken quite a while, but you know, resident there is following a more complex schedule. It's always been a balancing act with any of our changes. This is the same as option two, only we look at hauling it to Chicago at the end. There would be likely some additional costs incurred with this. Probably not so much for the actual collection, but as far as actually transporting it to Chicago and handling it along the way. Right now, real rough estimate we came up with was about eighty cents per month for dwelling, for the volume of glass coming in. You know, we'd have to go out for bids and some of the stuff. Certainly, we look at, you know, various options, but that was just a real rough cost estimate.
Scott, can I ask you a question before I forget it? What if you didn't have a special week to pick up glass? The resident has the option to put the glass in their bag, or there's bins around the city where they could take it?
It's coming.
Huh?
It's coming.
Oh, this would reduce the wear and tear. I'm trying to get, I keep seeing wear and tear on the machinery.
Yeah, no, putting bins around the city is a...
I see, I know that, I know that's coming up, but if you did just that, there wouldn't be wear and tear on the equipment.
Well.
It's in a bin, take it.
It'd certainly be a lower amount, yeah.
Lower amount, okay, let's go.
Trying to bring single stream into the system. Every other week you could do single stream. You'd have to haul it to an alternate MRF somewhere else. Glass would still be landfilled in most cases, but just not in Marquette County. No additional cost to residents, single stream is definitely a simpler system. You may increase the volume being recycled, and glass would not be landfilled within Marquette County. Negatives to this are you're no longer participating with county landfill authority. Realizing that, you know, when the county started here, and that was all formed. A lot of that was formed because the EPA and the DEQ were coming through and starting to shut down the little mom and pop dumps like we used to own. Now we still own it, it's now closed, but at the end of Pioneer Road. If you remember in the interim, we were hauling our solid waste clear to the east end of the UP, Dafter. And if you recall, it was very costly. So, I mean, we can do a lot of things, but cost has always got to be a factor in there that we need to be cognizant of. Because the tipping fee to go to Dafter was very pricey for us. Solid waste fees on your utility bill were up quite a bit at that time. You know, some of the things that may affect our curb program now that we're starting in with carts, whether you're on a single stream or a dual stream, really affects the size of the recycling carts that people want to use. So that's a consideration, as we've already kind of gone under, you know, into that program with the thought of dual stream being the main focus of the program. Single stream, as we talked about, you're going to have some added contamination, decrease in the value of the recycling material. Glass still landfilled, you know, and as we talk about, you know, the field that comes with a lot of this stuff, you know, there's always a carbon footprint that goes with transportation too. So you've got inert material you're using here, you're landfilling here versus bringing up a bunch of fossil fuels that you have somewhere else. So that's a trade-off that you need to consider, I guess. Option five, week one, we can go with fiber. Week two, we can go with single stream recycling. What that would do is be partial participation with the landfill authority, and part of it would have to go to a MRF elsewhere. Now, one of the issues with that is, you know, at some point in time, they're going to look at the quality of the recycling that you're bringing in. And if you're only bringing in single stream recycling, that's basically all rigids. You're likely to, you know, not get anything for it, maybe have to pay for it, but obviously you're going to develop a pattern, and they're going to, the MRFs are going to, you know, base the fee off of what you're bringing into them. Pros, again, glass, not landfilled in Marquette County, but glass is still lightly landfilled, larger carbon footprint again. The question that I had with this is, will residents decide that single stream recycling is simpler and stop using the fiber week, thereby eliminating the landfill authority participation? It's hard to say, I don't know what will happen. Six, supervised glass drop-off boxes to add them to the current system. You know, you're going to have, again, larger carbon footprint, people are going to be driving all over the city instead of just putting it out when the garbage trucks are coming by once a week. Wouldn't be available curbside, and positive it is available weekly, but not curbside. That's something you could probably look at doing, no additional cost to residents. But again, that's landfilling your glass. Option seven, same thing, only you're actually going to recycle it. You would have an added cost to, again, handle it and transport it to somewhere where you can recycle it. The one thing I will note for option six and seven, we talk about supervised boxes. We don't know, I suspect even if a supervised box, or, you know, for example, waste management allowing recycling dumped under tipping for now as opposed to the boxes outside, I think that's cut down on the contamination, but it hasn't eliminated the contamination. It's just human nature, I guess, in society that it's tough. And certainly, you know, you can continue to do more education, you do a lot with flyers, a lot on the website, and a lot of that stuff. But contamination is still an issue. And the last one is, you know, we can kind of wait and see what happens here in the next year or so. See what happens with the solid waste legislation, if it's rewritten. See what happens as far as dollars available to help develop different programs. Lots, I guess, that you can look at and just kind of see what happens moving forward. You can kind of look at them as they, you know, those options become available, or as dollars become available through the state. And that's the end of the options. Just one little thing, you talked about, you know, the glass plan, what do we take? I did find a real neat little YouTube video out there, you can watch, and I think it's a good video, it's only about seven minutes long. But it's called "The Story of Ripple Glass." It was either out of Kansas City, I think it was, somewhere down that direction. What you'll note though is when you look at the maps that they put together of what's happening, it's just like Brad and Don have kind of alluded to. They make it work because they have a high volume in a concentrated area that, you know, they can process through their plant. You just don't have that here. But it's a good little video, like I said, seven minutes, so. That's the end of mine, and the rest was just kind of a question, if there's discussion or...
Questions, comments, discussion, thoughts?
Paul? Jake, can you guys, basically, you know, the eighty cents pretty willing, a number that came up, I mean, is that a realistic? And even with that?
We made some basic estimates, and maybe we have to look into that some more, but...
Questions? Do you want to pay it?
That's it.
How do you find that out? It doesn't sound like a lot, but...
Talk to the artist, the artist, we've got to stop talking to her, we've got to talk to the artist. He's also stuff online, like how to decorate concrete, recycle glass, or wherever you want to decorate, recycle glass. Talk to the artist, Scott, go get the artist boards, tell him to hit the glass for you.
Jenna?
This is certainly a complex issue. I know you all put a lot of work into presenting, I appreciate you coming tonight, it's not easy. There are probably some decisions made in the past that have impacted where we are today. Try to put our best foot forward and figure out what's best. I have to say, I don't really like any of the options presented, not because you didn't do a great job, but because most of them include the glass being landfilled or not being curbside. So I would like to see what those options that are missing from this might look like, even if the costs are astronomical. That's what I'd like to see, because then I can rule it out maybe, but right now I can't, because it's not there for me to compare.
Yeah, your one option that had the curbside is probably what you got.
Which option was that? Maybe I missed it, there's probably something I didn't like about it.
It's three.
Three?
Yeah, I just thought that seemed a little too complex.
Well, and that's a concern, obviously. And your other option, again, isn't curbside. If you have to modify this even further to where you're making a special trip, and somebody's coming around, special trip just for glass, so you can stick with the regular system, I mean, you're adding another trip, that's where it gets expensive as far as the collection.
But I guess I'd just like to see all of those options.
Okay.
So so far I like option three, only.
So, do we have any provocative thoughts? Anything worthy to say, starting on this end?
Well.
Yes or no?
Not particularly, I want to do some more thinking and talking with more people. I think I'm on where Jenna's point of view is, and I know the city manager typed out this timeline for us, and I think also a combination of six with three would be the worst thing in the entire world if we had, like, vote. I mean, why? I mean, the last two options on this timeline are also something we all have to think about, which are talking to waste management and renegotiating, or changing what we do now completely. I mean, I'm not saying that that's what I want to do, but those are other options that aren't up here. So I'll just keep talking to people and see what they want.
Fred, anything?
Well, I think a thought would be, or a question for the folks at the landfill, is what happens if the city of Marquette no longer participates in the recycle program? Does that have a significant impact on what the landfill is doing?
Certainly does, it's forty percent of the volume.
Does that mean the landfill continues to recycle or stops the program?
That means that the landfill would have to reevaluate what it's doing at that point. I mean, that's a significant change in volume, so we'd certainly have to take a look at it.
So in effect, going with option three almost becomes a later option, in terms of what the city could do. In other words, we pull out, landfill has to relook, can we make this thing work economically?
Sure.
It would be, it would be very helpful if landfill were a partner in what the city is trying to do. In other words, to be economically, to devote the people economically considerate of where we're doing it, for the residents, but also from a pure ecological standpoint of what is best for the world, what is best to pass on to our children, the values that we want to pass on. Instead of, I guess I'll say, fighting the issue, not being a full partner, we're trying to be economically, environmentally sensitive, and looking to the future and what we're passing on. That is a frustrating part, because that really, again, I keep circling back, value of the landfill in this county should not be, how cheap can we put stuff in the ground? It should be how environmentally considerate we can put things in the ground, how we can make that program better work in the future. I don't see that coming out of the landfill, and I find that very discouraging, being here and trying to deal with that issue.
We're winding down, we're going this way yet, but I want to thank you, especially for coming up on Escondaba.
Thank you.
I think you're very, you gave us a lot of good information, and I know Scott put a lot of time into this, I'm sure he did. Brad, thank you. A lot of information, a lot of choices. I see glasses being, I just, you keep wanting to recycle it, but it just, there's roadblocks everywhere you turn. Yes, we could charge people more, we could pay for it somehow, charge them more, and I guess it would work, but I, you know, if there's no value in glass, we've got to face that. Doesn't mean we have to keep throwing it away, but there's no value, we're going to lose money on it, so there's just nothing else you can say about it. People want to recycle it, or feel that they're recycling it, they're not going to be able to because you can't. But they want to, and that's the hard part. They don't understand perhaps that there's no value in it. So I don't know how you're going to overcome that, you've got to make it known. We have these options, I don't know if this is the only options, but they're complex, they're too intertwined, you know, we're going to have to study them. I'm just not ready to say let's pick this one, so it's...
Yeah, the eight options aren't really meant to be the all and all options, but it's just to kind of throw some things out there and give you some ideas of what might be available.
So I hope it was, you know, the situation is clarified for the people that are here and may hear about it, I hope. Paul, anything?
Just real quick, I really feel, I agree with you, Larry, the fact that glass is pretty much an issue that is not going to, well, until we find out the true number of what it's going to cost us to get it all the way down and back, and option three there. I think that we should really genuinely focus on all of these other areas that we can truly make a difference in our households, especially if it's going to be organic, whatever, whatever way we can... way we can do it to try and make up for this inability to recycle our glass. Unless somebody's going to open up a facility that we take everything from the U.P. in northern Wisconsin and anywhere else, crush it in a giant pile, pull our boat up here, fill it up, and ship it down, which, I look at how much it costs to, to ship a ton of ore versus, over water versus a boxcar or a semi, we think, gee whiz, is there just something crazy enough about that to make sense? I doubt it, but imagine that, if we did that once or twice a year, and were able to at least, if nothing else, come out at, no loss, but regardless.
You have anything?
Good idea, Paul. You know, it's pretty, you're about mixing with the art, it'd be great.
Nope, I didn't say that.
Well, it'd be a good idea. But then, you know, I think that glass is just a dead situation, but, you know, maybe, you know, we all drive to get rid of our glass, you know, take it to whatever place where we get rid of your recyclables, but return your bottles, stuff like that, get 10 cents refund for it. But if you charge, but maybe if you had a bin at one of those places where you go, where there's a place you go to get rid of your returnables, they've had a bin, first of all, they get, have been there for glass. They'd be saying, you're going to fix up all the recyclables for those companies? Have been there for glass, you know, don't charge, just say, put your glass here, have somebody watch it over, just say, you know, wine bottles, whatever it's going to put there, you know, no, you know, you know, like, company said wine bottles would be a good thing to put in there, you know, with the glass charge, but maybe have a glass bin, you know, you're not going to get anything for it, but if you're going to the authority to return your other bottles and get money for that, maybe, might be an option, you know, so. Like that other option, wait, I have a hard time just figuring out what we can do what, way too complicated. On to Jenna.
Jenna, you spoke earlier, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, just that it seems like cost is a concern, environmental value is a concern. It's a tough decision, because some people value the cost savings more than the environmental impact, other people value the environmental impact more than the cost savings, so we're going to need to have more discussion and more information on this topic to make an informed decision.
City manager, you want to add anything?
I'm a bad guy.
I guess I could summarize just briefly. You know, to break these eight options down, I mean, you have to decide, one, we can recycle glass here, in landfill, it has no extra cost. We can pay to have it actually recycled, but then you exclude the landfill. I just want to remind the commission that when we approved the latest waste collection contract, the factor of utilizing the landfill locally was a huge factor in that decision. I know Brad alluded to it, but my own opinion is that the Marquette County landfill would have a very difficult time surviving if the city did not participate 100% in waste collection and recycling. I mean, it's just the, the nature of the numbers. So, you know, my, my only fear with shipping this recycling out is that the trickle-down effect it would have on the rest of the county, and the reaction, or the feedback from the rest of the county that Marquette is not recycling, therefore the recycling program at the landfill is collapsing, we can't, nobody can recycle. I mean, I think that's something that needs to be considered, and, so that's, that's the dilemma. But we'll continue to work through it, and we'll get you some numbers, more accurate numbers with the hauling to Germantown or wherever we might go. I know that Eagle waste won't go away, but they're willing to haul, I mean, they're willing to take our recycling, but again, they're not, they're reusing it, is that the term, reusing? Not recycling, repurposing, not recycling. So we do have to go as far away as Milwaukee to actually recycle. And, so, you know, anything beyond those simple concepts, they get a lot more complex. We obviously are comfortable with complex, neither am I, with paper going here, plastic going here, and glass going here. I mean, you'd think people could get comfortable with dividing that at their curb, but it doesn't always work well. The only issue I have with local bins for recycling, which we are more than happy to put out, is that they do need to be supervised, and Scott alluded to it, and I think waste management would allude to it if they were here, that you just can't rely on people to use drop-off sites responsibly. You just can't. You know, we'd love to put up bins and say, glass only, come back 24 hours, there's couches in it, there's, there's everything you can think of. I mean, it just, if people would recycle responsibly, this would be a lot easier to deal with, so. So I guess what you have to decide is, do you want to recycle, support the recycling program here, landfill glass, or ship our recycling out and not support the recycling program here? Kind of breaks down into those two scenarios, with a cost associated with the second. That's my summary. Mike, pretty close, Scott? Say yes. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move to the last public comment. Going to open public comment, again, it's time if anybody wants to make some statements to us. Just stand, tell us who you are, and what your address is, and you've got three minutes. Ginny?
Ginny Kilo, 1710 Harperview Drive. A lot of the comments that you made, especially about the trust issue, were what I was going to mention, one of the things. I prefer to buy things in glass, particularly food, rather than plastic, and this really impacts me. I've been, I've been recycling glass for 40 years. I don't like the idea of not recycling it. If it has to be put in the landfill, I would prefer that it be crushed, so that it uses up less space and perhaps has a filtration effect. The other question that I have is, can we still bring glass to waste management? I know that was the case for a while, and then somebody told me that they're no longer accepting it. They were taking it to Eagle River, is it, and sorting it there, and then they were crushing the glass and using that in their landfill. I would like to know whether that's an option still. I, I'm going to have a real hard time throwing away glass.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Don Snowden, 320 Cedar Street. I kind of agree with Ginny, I probably haven't bought as many things in glass as she has, but I've, for a long time, ever since we came out with those brown, green bins where we were recycling, I thought we were doing something, and that everybody was cooperating. And I think there's a lot of people that want to recycle, reuse, and save the planet, you know? But it was kind of, this year, we're talking to Mike Conley, and this whole issue came up, and it turns out that the, the glass hasn't, has been just going into the landfill for, I don't know how many years, since 2012, I think he said, or maybe even longer than that. But I'd like to see glass recycled. I'd like to separate it out. I just hate throwing it in the trash with paper or garbage-type stuff, and I would like, we rinse it out, we put it in here, we thought it was being used purposefully. I go down to, my wife's sister lives in Mequon, and you go out and you look at the, the streets are paved with crushed glass, mixed in with the, the McAdam, and it's used as an aggregate. You can look at the streets, when it's not snowing out, the streets look nice, they look sparkly, and in a nice sunny day, it looks very nice. And I don't see why we couldn't, why can't we become, you know, start doing something here in Marquette? Maybe save the glass longer until there's a big enough pile that we can crush it and use it, sell it to Lindbergh, and let them, you know, start paving things with, with the glass. I don't know, that, I think there's other uses, and I think that we could be proactive here and not have to send things away. Just store it for a little while. We've got a large, I don't know how many hundred acres you've got out there at the landfill site in Marquette County, but I'm sure there's enough room to store glass for three or four weeks, or however many weeks it takes for you to get enough to make it economically feasible. So that's what I'd like to say.
Thank you. Yes?
Hannah Rose, 622 North 4th Street. One thing I am surprised has not been mentioned is that glass is the only laterally recyclable material, which means every bit that you put into recycling it, you get back out. That doesn't happen with plastic, or aluminum, or anything else. So that's absurd to me, that we haven't been recycling it, and that we're not going to recycle it. I am curious where the returnable glass items go? Is that an entirely different system for like the...
Yes.
Yeah?
They're recycled through the bottlers, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, those recycle back through the containers.
And you can't do that? You can't partner with them or anything?
Unless they put...
It's called the bottle bill.
Yeah, the bottle bill. It's a state law.
But those actually get recycled? They don't get put into a landfill?
Yes.
That's great, okay, awesome. You mentioned that pounding the idea of what is recyclable and what is not recyclable every quarter would be, like, super annoying to do, but I am surprised that it doesn't happen more. No one really knows what they're supposed to recycle. They like, I, it's, unless you dig into the internet and actually look up what should be recycled, or if you go to the library and see their, like, recycling page, I don't understand why there aren't, like, commercials, PSAs. There should be a lot of effort put into recycling information. You need to step up and, like, really put an effort into that, please. I appreciate the sites on composting, and the education in that has to be astronomical, because composting is a complex thing. You can't put dairy products, you can't put meat in it, you need to, like, really educate people about this stuff. And why were you accepting glass and recycling for five years? I don't get that. Why didn't it stop in 2012? What, was it putting it off so that you didn't have to deal with the public outcry of this? I don't get it. And a material not leaching toxins into the landfill is not a reason to put it in the landfill. Just because it doesn't cause more issues than other products in that landfill does not mean that it should go there. And I don't understand why this has to be a profitable industry. Recycling is just something that you should do, because we produce so much waste as it is, we need to cut that back however we can. I understand that you can't have a deficit, or you have to, like, find the money somewhere else, but zero loss should be what you're aiming for, and if you can make profit, great, but if not, zero is good enough. This is important stuff for the world. I don't, I don't think it's a dead issue either. You guys shouldn't just say, like, oh, well, this is it, please find a solution. This is absurd, like, I'm pissed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Doug Garrison, 418 West Crescent. I appreciate all your comments, Commissioner Stonehouse and others, all make good sense. I agree with Dr. Snowden, though, I think he was saying that we need to be proactive. Whatever we do here, you know, Marquette kind of has a reputation for taking the lead in things, and I'd like to see, whatever we end up doing, it's going to require a lot more studying, as you suggested. Whatever we do, though, let's be proactive, and let's show other communities how to do this right. I would encourage that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Anyone? Last chance. Okay.
Christine Larson, 508 Hampton Street. A lot of it is just echoing what other folks have said. I'm really upset that my glass wasn't being recycled for however many years I thought it was, because that would change my choices of what I was purchasing, what kind of containers I was purchasing, if I could find something that was recyclable instead. So, I mean, one thing that I would like, as changes come through, I really think it's important to let the citizens know what's going on, so that if we need to adjust our lifestyle to compensate for that somehow, that we have the knowledge, so that we're not thinking we're recycling, when we're not, like, is the plastic change or something like that? I do also agree with some better instructions. I just found out that milk cartons, fiber milk cartons are not recyclable, and in the instructions online, under other, it says beverage cartons and boxes, so I assume the milk carton was a fiber recyclable, and it's not. So some clarification there to make sure that we do all understand what should be recycled and what's not. And if, if glass is being recycled somehow, whether it's through distributors, whether it's with other recycling, like the industrial recycling, or company recycling in town, find a way to partner with that, instead of just saying, well, the people can't do it anymore, somebody else is recycling. If we can explore options to partner with somebody to make it feasible, I'm happy if we can find a way for responsible people to drop it off, I'm happy to drop it off somewhere where water and running air is, somewhere else, that's a good option for me. And I think there's a lot of responsible people that want to do that, hopefully that would outweigh the people that are just dumping their trash bins.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? Okay, seeing none. We're going to close public comment. We are adjourned. Thank you for coming. Thank you.